Hi, ready? We're on the third case right now, which is a request for a commercial plan development, 11 BOS PD 405 Family Dollar CPD. At this time, I will swear in the witnesses. Jackie Ganson and Pramaj Shudhary. Please raise your right hands. Do you swear a firm testimony and you'll provide truthful truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Now Jackie, you've been previously tendered as an expert in land use planning. Pramaj, you've been previously tendered as an expert in transportation planning. Okay. At this time, I will get the w- um, those will be, we have citizens, but Dave DePue, Mike, Bill Morris, Mike Morris, James, Mc- did you get that? McCord, Lee Benson, anybody else? Tina Echflad. And the other two are going to stay seated right now. Raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony? You're going to provide truthful truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
In a attempt to try to keep the time shorter. Dave DePue, you've been previously been tendered as an expert in land use planning. And Bill Mor- and Bill Morris and Mike Morris, you've been previously been tendered as experts in civil engineering and traffic. I will not do voir dire. Tina Echflad, you've been previously tendered as an expert in land use planning, as a planner. If I do need to do a later voir dire, we'll do it, but I don't believe that's necessary. Please proceed with your case.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Charles Bassinett of the Henderson Franklin Law Firm in Fort Myers, Benita Springs, and Sanibel. I'm representing, representing the applicant before you today. With me today is Dave DePue, a principal of and a land use planner with Morris DePue Associates. As you have gathered from Audrey's comments just a moment ago, we have a number of experts with us today. Mike Morris, who is our transportation expert. Bill Morris, our engineering expert. James McCord, who is a landscape architect. And Lee Benson, who is a building architect. Those folks are with us, but our intention is not to have them testify in our case in chief unless there are specific questions, in which case we would be happy to bring them up to answer your questions. Our intention is to have Dave DePue go through a PowerPoint presentation. You already have a copy, a hard copy of that PowerPoint. We've given a copy to the court reporter, to Audrey, and to the other folks in Benita to make sure everyone has one. We also have Eric Lindsay and Brett Gilbert with us today. They're from the applicant, Bose Development. The request before you today is to rezone a .74 acre site near the southeast corner of the intersection of Benita Beach Road and Race Track Road from C1A to CPD to provide for the construction of a Family Dollar store. And you can see on the screen here, here is the site right here. Here is Race Track. Here is Furlong, I'm sorry, here's Furlong right in here. And then BBR, Benita Beach Road runs east to west along the front of the property. We've had an opportunity to review the staff report. Um, I'm sorry. We've had an opportunity to review the staff report and obviously concur with its recommendation of approval. We have also reviewed the staff conditions and do not object to those conditions. Finally, we concur with staff recommendations to approve our requests for deviations and do not object to their conditions associated with the deviations. I would like to say that we appreciate the time staff has expended on this request and we appreciate their willingness to work with us on the request. They have been very accessible during this process and certainly that's a, we appreciate that very much. It is our intention to use a PowerPoint, as I said, in connection with our presentation. I would like to offer the PowerPoint into evidence at this point. Ask that it be labeled as applicant's exhibit one. Thank you. As I indicated, Mr. DePue is the only one I anticipate testifying this morning unless there are specific questions which can only be answered by one of the other experts. At this point, I would like to have Mr. DePue come up and go through his PowerPoint.
Good morning, and it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having us, and thanks also again to staff for being so constructive in terms of working out conditions and working along the elements associated with this application. My name is David DePue. I am president of Morris DePue Associates. As Ms. Vance indicated to you, I am an expert in land planning and have been certified as such for a number of years and across a variety of venues, not the least of which was in the city of Benita Springs. Subject property today, it's a little bit different out there today because of the construction. You've got a lot more orange barrels and cones out there, but the tire store is on this property here that's under construction. And then you see the subject property here, and then you get to the Race Track property just to the west of the subject property. The academy is to the south. Furlong Street runs along the south, Race Track, and then Benita Beach Road across the north side. Obviously, we've got the potential of the lows across the street on the north side of Benita Beach Road. So this is an area in which the future land use map designates it as commercial. It's a commercial location. General commercial is the designation, and it's surrounded on all sides, as you can see, by that commercial designation along Benita Beach Road. The current zoning does, district for this property is C1A, and that is the essence of why we're in here today, for the commercial plan development. Changing that over from the C1A district to the CPD district in order to provide a little bit more flexibility with regards to the zoning on the subject property and the development regulations that would be associated with the subject property. Master Concept Plan shows clearly what we're proposing. We're going to talk about this in a little bit more detail, although I'm going to try and do it in a fashion that doesn't completely bore you to tears, although I'm glad you all got some caffeine during the break because the planning presentation doesn't have to be long to send you off into the land of nod. At any rate, just a couple of features. You can see that north is to the left-hand side of this particular graphic, and you see what we've done is moved to the west as far as we can. The pedestrian access and the handicap space further to the west, which is to the bottom of this drawing, you can see what's proposed for the Race Track gas station. At the top of the drawing or to the east, you can see the parking lot proposed for the tire store. Furlong is on the right-hand side of the drawing, and the Family Dollar store is located back off of Benita Beach Road. And as you can see, what we've tried to do is also show you the location of where the landscaping is going to go and where the tree masses versus the shrubbery is going to go. And again, we'll discuss that in a few minutes when I get into some more details with regard to some of the deviations. I do want to just talk a little bit about the Master Concept Plan in the sense that it provides access from Benita Beach Road, as I indicated, located as far west as possible to eliminate what, as best as we could, any, any conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians. We've also added some additional stop bars and stop signs for traffic calming. Along the south side, we've tried to provide textured pavement for separation along Furlong, and the landscaping and buffering is incorporated. And I'll show you when we get to talk about that in a few minutes, how we've staggered that in there so that the building itself is landscaped and buffered from Furlong through the, not just the buffer and the perimeter plantings, but also the design of those. We've enhanced the landscaping and provided 100% native species as part of the overall presentation. You may be somewhat familiar with the Race Track Development Agreement. This is part of the parcel that was originally part of that development agreement. The floor area is within the limits. The planned development zoning would be required. The agreement itself contemplates changing over the zoning if such would be necessary. The building and site design, we believe, are consistent with the green standards that were established in that developer's agreement, and we provided for what we believe is a unified architectural style with the Bermuda shutters, the banding on the cornices, the columns and pilasters on the, on the front and side facades, a standing seam roof, and the colors of the building, which we've been working with the town's architect, and we have his acquiescence and approval regarding the intent of the city design standards and the Race Track Development Agreement. One thing I do want to point out, and what we've got over on this board, is the overall property associated with that Race Track Development Agreement. Subject property is this one that's outlined in blue here. The Race Track property itself is the one outlined in red. What I've also shown in yellow is the turn lane and the slice of the frontage that's taken off for the turn lane in order to provide the access point over here. You can't really see it from this distance, but the, this is outlined in green, and that is an easement that provides access over here for both the Race Track and the subject property. Now, what's happened is the geometry of this site has been radically affected by the location of the easement here and the slice taken off the frontage and then the little bump out. And those, those geometry elements have a major impact on the overall design of the site, and inevitably, the consequences that flow from that are part and parcel of why the site is laid out the way it is and some of the deviations that have been suggested or requested as part of the application. We are in agreement with the staff-proposed conditions. I can, I can get that closer to you all if you want it. We can just pull it off and bring it up to the board. Absolutely no problem if somebody else wants to see it. You want me to bring it up?
Can we maybe put it here? Can you drive that up there, please?
It's, it's a little bit difficult to see from this distance.
But it's also on page 13 of what?
It is, but it's, it's kind of small there, too.
Right there in front of the screen's fine. We don't need to see.
Yeah, we don't want to see how small it is.
No, on the, on the.
Up here?
Uneasel.
On the. You'll have to forgive him. He's not mechanically inclined. We take him to these things anyway. The clients insist. I'm not sure I understand why all the time, but.
There, you can see through it. There you go.
All right.
Good.
Just for the. I warned you. I warned you.
I think it's a chair, and maybe the chair could be used instead.
Is he an engineer?
He is an attorney.
Oh, an att- oh, that explains it.
Yeah.
You get the big bucks for this, or what?
Okay, Chuck, at this point, you touch your tie and you go, you don't get no respect.
There you go.
Not level.
That's good.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's important to note because those, those factors, especially the factor of the, this easement across here, to some extent, the, the slice off the top for the widening and the, the deceleration lane on Benita Beach Road, all push everything to the back, and then the access through there also ends up pushing our pedestrian connection to the west and, and modifying a couple of the elements there in order to make the site usable, and ultimately pushes the building back on the site as well. So, I mean, the geometry of the site is affected as a result of the, of the elements associated with the overall Race Track approval and the development agreement. At any rate, we are in agreement fully with the staff's proposed conditions. The floor area on the site is limited to 8,000 square feet, and the floor area ratio is, is only like a .25 ratio, so it's fairly low in terms of the potential utilization of the site, which in this particular category of the comprehensive plan is much, much higher than that. The staff condition requires a more extensive TIS. I'll talk just briefly about what our initial findings on the, the traffic were as we did our study. Just to touch briefly on a couple of the other conditions that we thought need to be mentioned, the timing of deliveries for the site is very limited. This is important with regard to the deviation simply because we want to keep the deliveries to a certain hours. And secondly, the, the number of deliveries and the time that the deliveries are going to take place are relatively limited just in general as a result of the size of the store. There just aren't that many deliveries themselves. Nevertheless, we've tried to keep them in a timely fashion. There's no outdoor display of products. There's no drive-through that's being proposed, whether it's on Benita Beach Road or elsewhere. That's not the kind of facility we've got here. We also attempt to implement the Race Track Development Agreement as part of the overall development plan. The cross-access roadway is consistent with the proposed design that has been adopted for Race Track and the development order for Race Track. We've got the pavement edges all lined up with the plans for Race Track, and we've, as I said, provided some traffic calming devices through here so that will slow traffic down as it comes off of Benita Beach Road and as it comes out of the Race Track to go back on to Benita Beach Road. We made the, we've fully provided for the turn lane as part of our design, and the, the buffers are consistent with those buffers that are mandated by the agreement, including use of native landscaping. I want to touch briefly on the deviations here as well, just to, to kind of demonstrate what's, what's happened as a result of the geometry again. The first is a deviation of the 15-foot side setback to allow a setback of five feet along the westerly property line. The difficulty is in this area here where the, the store gets up next to the Race Track site on this particular drawing. North is to the top of the, of the site, and west is to the left-hand side of the site. What we've done is where we've got larger area up here on the north side of the store, and then at this bump out on the south side, is cluster up all of the canopy trees. And we've nevertheless provided a landscape buffer along that small side. It corresponds to the perimeter plantings. And as a result, we've got a 36-inch hedge along that, along that westerly side of the building. The Race Track building itself is located approximately 75, 76 feet west of the property line, and as you can see, their development order reflects landscaping or at least a green area on that, on that easterly side of the Race Track site and westerly side of Family Dollar. We believe that this approval will allow the flexibility to use the site with the given restrictions that are found on the site, and as such, we think that this is consistent with the intent of the regulations to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Benita Springs and the potential patrons of the Family Dollar site. Deviation two talks about a setback on the rear loading area, dropping that from 10 feet to five feet along the rear property line. Now, part of this has occurred because of what's happened along the front with the ingress and egress easement across the front, and this parking aisle is wider than what you would normally expect in a parking aisle as a result of needing to accommodate a 180-degree change in direction as traffic comes in and goes off to a Race Track. So what's happened here is that's pushed everything back. We've tried to locate the, the store itself in the middle of the area left and yet still provide the perimeter plantings. And so as a result, what we've got is a loading area in the back where the trucks will pull in and then pull in on Furlong and then back into this facility here. The actual unloading and loading area is back here behind the landscape buffer along the south side. We've also got textured pavement here in order to differentiate between the sidewalk and the site itself so that when the, the truck pulls in, it's not going to be pulling over the landscape strip, but also because we've got approximately 64 and a half feet of landscape buffer along Furlong. The area where the activity is actually going to take place is behind the buffer, and it's buffered by the canopy trees over here in the southwest corner as well as the buffer along Furlong. And as I indicated, there's simply not a, a lot of deliveries that a store this size will take. We don't anticipate there's going to be a huge number of trucks coming and going from the store. It should be relatively modest, and we believe and have worked with staff to try and come up with something that is functional and should operate properly for the site itself and, again, meet the intent of the regulations to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens as well as the patrons. Deviation number three is, and then I'll apologize for this slide right up front. I know there's way too much text on it. But what I wanted to try and do is to provide you with some specific examples of some of the other stores throughout the state of Florida in which Family Dollar has experience with parking rates at approximately the same generation rate that we've proposed for this particular store. And we've got some pictures of some of them up here, albeit they are a bit small, but nevertheless, these are existing stores that are throughout the state, and we've provided you with a few more examples here. We've got this one up here from St. Pete, has three spaces per thousand, 27 spaces for the total. We've got this one down here on East Hillsborough in Tampa equals 3.27 spaces per thousand square feet. We've got another one in Orlando that's not shown, 31 spaces, 3.38 per thousand square feet. We've got one, and this is the one in Fort Meade. It's got 3.13 spaces per thousand at 125 South Charleston. There's one in Groveland, which is this one. I grew up, I grew up right outside of Groveland. I grew up in Eustis and Mount Dora, so I'm more or less familiar with Groveland, although not many people know where it is. And this is one that's interesting because there's actually only seven total parking spaces along this kind of southeast side of the store and virtually no on-street parking in the area at all. And yet, this is a very high sales volume store, and it seems to be operating just fine. We've also got another one, this is a new one, in Ocala, Northwest 45th Terrace. This is three spaces per thousand, which is, it's a slightly larger store than we've got here, but nevertheless, it seems to be functional without any problems at all. And finally, then we pulled another one from the Panhandle that does another, has the same ratio. So we believe that the experiences that Family Dollar has in this particular area suggest to us that the 24 spaces are going to be sufficient. Our, our design also puts in a pedestrian access as well as bicycle racks, and we're hoping that some mobility issues are also going to be ultimately the type of, some non-traditional mobility will provide some access to some folks to the store, and we are on a LITRAN route at this location as well. So we believe that all of these things will combine, again, to implement the intent of the code as well as preserve the public health, safety, and welfare. Finally, on the fourth deviation, going back to the geometry as all of these end up doing, there's a requirement for a 15-foot wide D buffer along Benita Beach Road. There is a small space in this area in here where we don't quite meet the 15 feet. We meet the 15 feet on the ends, and of course, over here on the east side, but in the middle area here, as a result of the widening along Benita Beach Road, we have some insufficient length there. So we're asking for an average of 10 feet, and we're keeping all of the required plantings for the D buffer. But you can, you can see this kind of trapezoidal shape up in here of the, of the front buffer, and that's, that's the area where we have the difficulty. But again, what we're, what we're suggesting is that we will average a 10-foot wide buffer and will exceed the 15 feet in certain areas of the buffer. Part of this, as I said, is an indication of the, the wider, the 30-foot ingress/egress easement that exists in this area here required for the, the gas station and as well the turn lane improvements on Benita Beach Road. Again, we believe that we, we have made through the design elements associated with this adequate provision to preserve the health, safety, and welfare and meet the intent of the code. Turning just very briefly to traffic, we took a look at levels of service along Benita Beach Road. You're at B at the, the moment. In the AM and PM projected for 2012 is again at B. With the background traffic that are projected in this area and the approved projects, it looks like you're going to D and C in a four-lane condition. However, you've got a six-lane set of improvements out there, and with the, all of the approved projects and the proposed Family Dollar, you're still going to be at level of service C. So we believe that the traffic analysis demonstrates that the Benita Beach Road corridor will still operate at acceptable levels of service with the proposed facility that we're talking about, along with the improvements currently underway. I'm going to zip briefly through the comprehensive plan issues. We believe that since it's designated as general commercial and those areas are intended for a wide range of commercial, residential, and light industrial uses, that we comply with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map designation for the plan. The requested height is 35 feet or one story. Again, we believe this is consistent with the provisions found in that particular portion of the plan as well as with policy 1.1.3, and it is compatible with the adjoining and proximate commercial uses and residential land, residential structures that are located to the southeast of the subject property. Commercial uses in policy 1.1.4, we believe are consistent with the various land use patterns that are found on Benita Beach Road. I already talked about some of the surrounding and proximate uses to the subject property, and we believe this is consistent with those uses. 1.1.22, the property is part of an existing development. It does not directly abut any residential properties. As I indicated, we've got about a 250-foot distance between the residential properties of Pine Haven Residential, and within that area, there's an indigenous preserve. There's also the academy down to the south as well as vacant commercial property in the area. 1.7.3, we provided pedestrian connections to Benita Beach Road as well as bicycle facilities. It's proximate to a LITRAN route. 1.3, objective 1.3, and objective 1.14, we believe that we comply as indicated by the city's architectural consultant with the architectural criteria. The landscaping is, actually exceeds code, but is at least per code with native species. It represents an infill property, and it proposed, we believe, the proposal is consistent with adjoining and proximate development with compatibility provided through the buffers and design. We believe that all of the necessary infrastructure exists and is in place, and as such, would be consistent with objective 1.11 and 1.11, or policy 1.11.1. Conclusion, we believe that we have provided entitlement to the rezoning by meeting the compliance with the comp plan, the code, and all of the other applicable codes and regulations. We've exceeded all the performance and locational standards set forth for the uses that are being proposed. We believe it's consistent with the densities and intensities set forth in the plan, that it's compatible. It will not place an undue burden upon existing transportation and infrastructure facilities. It will not adversely affect any environmentally critical areas or natural resources. It's an appropriate mix of uses at the location. The conditions that are being proposed are indeed safeguarding the public interest and directly connected to the application, reasonably related to any impacts that the application would have. And as I indicated, sufficient public facilities are available. We are more than happy to answer any questions, or if you want to hold them till after the staff presentation. It is simply your choice. Probably way more than you ever wanted, but thank you.
In our staff report, there's a schedule of uses, and where would you say that Family Dollar fits in? How would we classify it?
I would say either a variety store, which is at the bottom of page three, or a department store, which is kind of in the upper third of page three, sir.
And you, you talked about possibly putting bicycle racks in?
Yes, sir. Our design shows bicycle racks. You can't really see them on this, but they're, they're in there right, I believe they're on this corner of the store. Yeah, they're on this corner of the store up here. Yes, sir.
Okay, and currently, one parking space is designated for handicap?
Yes, sir. That's the required amount for this particular group of spaces.
And, and throughout the staff report, they talk about the square footage of gross floor area. I don't know if it was mentioned anywhere in the report with the actual.
8,000 square feet.
It, it is 8,000. It is 8,000?
Yes, sir.
It's actually, if you look on page two of 16, Condition A1, second paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
And it's also on...
Limited, limited to 8,000.
Right. And on page one, under 1B, it's also references 8,000 square feet.
And of the 24 parking spaces, what, what do you believe would be utilized for employees?
These stores are designed not to have any more than three employees in place at any one time. So, three spaces and maybe, maybe less, depending on how the employees get there.
And what, what are the anticipated hours of operation? And days of operation?
I believe it's going to be a seven-day-a-week operation, and I'm assuming that the hours of operation are going to be something on the order of nine to nine, or nine to 10 at night. We will find out that, I, I'm not sure that I could answer that off the top of my head, but I assume it's something along those lines.
If I may, Charles Bassinet for the record. Approximation, because each store is a little bit different, but he's looking at a seven-day-a-week operation, probably going to be eight to eight, Monday through Saturday, and then nine to six, nine to seven on Sunday. Again, it's not, those aren't exact hours, but it will be seven days a week. It's just the hours can vary somewhat from store to store. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Depew, if you look at this slide here, the back entrance, the south entrance, that's right opposite the entrance to the charter school, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Kind of an impact is that going to have as far as additional traffic with the, the school?
We, we, right now, the traffic study shows half the traffic entering and exiting on furlong, and half the traffic entering and exiting on Benita Beach Road. The, really, what's going to happen is anybody that wants to proceed in a westerly direction on Benita Beach Road is going to go out furlong, down to racetrack, and then out to the intersection there. Anybody that's going to be going in an easterly direction on Benita Beach Road just gets right out on Benita Beach Road. So, there, there will be some traffic throughout here. This tends not to be a very high-traffic generator, as, as is shown by the lower parking rates.
Right.
It's lower than a normal retail outlet, so you won't have, from this facility, you won't have, I, I don't believe you'll have that much traffic coming out and hitting furlong. Now, you've got racetrack over here as well.
Right. And you've got the tire store, right? So, I mean, that's going to be additional traffic. Problem I'm, problem I'm having, I'm concerned with is the hours of the school operation. How's that going to...
Well, in the morning, it shouldn't be, there shouldn't be a conflict.
Right, not in the morning, but in the...
Because they'll be, they'll be getting kids before the, the traffic actually occurs. In the afternoon, again, there's just, there's just not going to be that much traffic coming out of here when the charter school is picking up or dropping off kids. So, I, I don't think that's going to be a real issue. We haven't done specific studies with regard to that at this point, and I'm anticipating that when we get the development order, we will be taking a look at that. Certainly, we could do something on the order of limiting deliveries, so that deliveries don't take place during the pickup times, the afternoon pickup times for the charter school. That, that might be, that might be one of the potential things to do.
Might be a good step in the right direction there, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Depew.
I have, I have, excuse me, I have a question regarding traffic concerns. One is the 30-foot ingress and egress that you have coming off of Benita Beach Road, and how you're going to, I, the traffic to and from the racetrack, people rushing in and rushing, driving in, driving out across what is going to be a pedestrian right-of-way. That's a concern, especially when they make that hard right turn, and what are we going to be able to do to slow traffic down at those two points? And then, at the, at the rear of the store, I see the people coming out of the charter school, wanting to avoid the traffic light at, at Racetrack Road, cutting, using that as a shortcut through your lot at maybe a relatively high speed to get, to access eastbound Benita Beach Road. And that, that's a concern to me, with pedestrian traffic coming, walking through your parking lot. And I, I don't know what we can, what can we do to slow traffic down, or we can put a sign up saying "through traffic prohibited," but on, on the backside of the store, but you know how that works. Those are two concerns, and, and I see accidents happening. And especially at that first corner there, on the 30-foot easement, where that first right turn, car's backing out of that parking place, somebody coming around that corner, and it just, it's like a dangerous situation.
And, and if I may, I have a kind of a related concern, because looking at deviation number four, the way that landscaping is bunching up right around that turn, that hard turn off of Benita Beach Boulevard, I see that that is blocking visibility and, and maybe adding to this overall problem.
Let me, let me talk about that for a, a bit, because the staff and ourselves were very concerned about all of those issues wrapped up in one as well. We had a number of meetings to try and talk about that and resolve some of those issues. Do the easy one here on landscaping. What you're seeing there are tree masses, canopy tree masses, and not hedge masses. So, we believe there's going to be visibility through the trees for traffic coming in. Now, traffic coming in has got to slow down to do 180-degree turn. So, yeah, they're going to be coming around there, but they're going to have to do a complete 180-degree change of direction to get over to the racetrack. So, we know that there's, there's a concern in this area here, which is one of the reasons why we put the, the pedestrian area back in here. We've had some other preliminary discussions about the potential of a speed table for the pedestrian crossing as well, which will slow people down. We could also take a look at putting a speed bump, as well as, you know, signage in this area, alerting people that they're coming into a pedestrian zone. We could likewise look at speed bumps or a speed table of some sort coming through here. We could look at some other traffic calming device, in the sense of putting in some different textures in the paving. That often helps to slow folks down. But you see, we've already added the stop bars. You don't, don't really see the stop signs, but we're adding stop signs in all of these locations as well, so that people get stopped and slowed down going out or trying to come through one way or the other. Now, so we, we believe that we've got some, some good traffic calming methods for exiting traffic and for controlling traffic coming through, although, again, we've got no real problem if, if the board wants to take a look at some other traffic calming, such as speed bumps or textured pavement. This movement's a difficult movement. We are concerned about this movement. Again, it's, it's part of what happened when, when the easement and the elements associated with access to the racetrack down here were, were established, and it, it makes this site a more difficult site. But we believe that, given the, the slowing and the 180-degree movement, we believe that keeping the shrubbery out of this area and only canopy trees will allow visibility for these parking spaces to see traffic coming through. And then, if we need to add, if we need to add signage and/or some other speed control device, for example, textured pavement across this area here possibly, or a speed bump across this area here, and a sign warning that there's a speed bump, we can certainly do that as well.
And he may have mentioned this previously, Charles Bassinet for the record, but right at the northwest corner of the store and the northeast corner of the store, right in those two areas, there are going to be stop signs. There will be stop signs that will regulate traffic in an eastbound fashion. So, if you're coming from racetrack, you have to stop here. If you're coming out, either from racetrack or from the store, you have to stop at this line here. So, that, in addition, will certainly slow traffic down in an eastbound fashion. And as Dave said, as they make that corner, they have to make 180-degree turn, that traffic will be slowed down automatically, just because of the dynamics of the turn.
The trees that you're talking about, when, when you come in, what, what will be the height when they're installed? I think that's a concern. And, and the low-lying shrubs, how high are they?
I'm going to ask Mr. McCord to come up, because you, you have now exceeded my knowledge on landscape materials.
I find that hard to believe.
Believe me, Bob, it's true, it's true.
Trust me, he's not lying.
Have you testified here before?
With a different company, and many, many years ago.
He answered yes.
Yes, I need to be recertified.
Okay. All right, you've been sworn in. Please get your full name for the record.
James McCord.
And where are you currently employed?
Moore's Depew Associates.
In what capacity?
I'm their landscape architect and vice president.
And as a landscape architect, what do you typically do? Hey, I try to make the questions fun and amusing.
Not, not much typical being landscape architect. Pretty much site planning, plant, planning design, hardscape design, irrigation design. That's pretty simple.
Okay. Have you designed this particular design plan?
Yes, ma'am.
And have you testified in cases where you have designed similar plans to this design plan?
Yes, ma'am, in several municipalities. I've been certified as an expert.
Okay. And you've been previously tendered as an expert in landscape architecture in this jurisdiction?
Yes, ma'am, probably about 10 years ago.
And who, where were you employed at that?
Johnson Engineering.
Okay. And you previously testified before this tribunal, what other tribunals?
Here in Benita?
No, no.
Oh.
Lee County, Florida.
Oh, Lee County, Gainesville, Cape Coral, who else? Collier County.
And where do you hold your degrees?
My undergraduate in landscape construction, Mississippi State University. My master's degree is from Louisiana State University.
Okay. And is that someone in that version?
Yes, ma'am.
And is he a member of any organizations related to landscape architecture? I would like to ask what your expertise is.
Yes, ma'am. I'm a member of American Society of Landscape Architects. I'm also CLARB certified, which is the Council of Landscape Architect, Architectural Registration Board, which is a, means not only I'm state licensed, I'm also nationally certified as a landscape architect as well. I'm a member of the IA Irrigation Association, certified irrigation designer, contractor, auditor, lead, gets to be an I chart.
Okay. And you have provided us with a copy of your current resume?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe he can be tendered as an expert in landscape architecture.
Be great.
I was going to ask his college a couple of times, just to get the LSU stuff, but I thought that was...
I don't like he's qualified.
No tigers.
He decided he's...
They can ask some more questions.
It is, it is the number one design, number one design school for landscape architecture in the nation. That's kind of why I went there, so.
Terrific.
Sorry, Florida.
Go Tigers.
All right. Your question was on the, on the size of the trees. The trees we were planting are, are actually, exceed the heights requirements than a normal code. We're planting them higher mainly for visibility, so we can get the, the crown up higher. These do meet, you know, FDOT requirements for visibility triangles, where you have a certain height of your, of the level of your canopy and the distance between the shrub. There's that view corridor. That, I used to do a lot of work for Lee County, do a lot of roadway designs, a lot of 41. Actually, involved a little bit on the 41 here in Benita Springs when I was with my other employer. So, site visibility is, is, is under all my scrutiny, because again, when you design for DOT, you have to make sure that that is, that isn't a concern. And being that we got that 180, the traffic is going to have to slow down significantly. You're talking five miles an hour to make a 180 turn, or they're going to, they could roll their car. I'm not an engineer, but just knowing when I've tried to take a turn a little too quick in my Jeep, I've felt it, try to do it, so, stuff as well. But these trees, at time of planting, you're looking at a 14 to 16-foot high for the, the canopy tree, and the, the royal palms are eight, 10, and 12-foot gray wood, meaning that just the part of the trunk that's, that's gray is eight to 10, 12 foot. Then you've got another six foot plus, just before you start getting to frond. So, you're talking about the royal palms are going to be in the 20-foot range. So, so all the trees are significantly higher for visibility. We also wanted to use them larger, just because we were asking for some deviations, just to help justify, hey, we're putting in larger plant material, but mainly for visibility purposes.
The low-level plantings?
Low-level shrubs vary. Most of them aren't going to get more than three feet, because there is a code that requires to be maintained at three feet. However, if, you know, if they'll allow, we can maintain them even lower than that, say two and a half feet. We wouldn't have a problem with that as well. But they're just standard hedge, but I, that is required, but I've, I, I kind of bring that around. Do you have the...
You agree the depiction is a little confusing?
Well, it's just because all you see are the trees.
Right.
You see, this, this hedge right here actually comes around, it comes around tight, so it keeps, it keeps the visibility here. And then, on this side, are shrubs that don't get more than a couple of feet or less than that. So, so where the visibility is, it's, it's 18-inch, two-foot shrubs. The requirement by code, the 36-inch hedge is... Shoot. Sorry about that. Wrong direction.
Wrong direction, yeah. Are you still bothered on which?
I was going both directions. Give me the right. But, um, again, like I said, I, I took that, took that turn, that visibility in consideration.
Obviously, I'm not the only non-engineer in the house.
We, we use the boards.
Florida, they teach that. Florida State.
Unfortunately, Florida State doesn't have a, have a program, but anyway. Again, the, the hedge wraps around, again, that's a code requirement. Thank you. That's dangerous. The hedge wraps around like this, and then about a five-foot-plus area here is, is very, even lower shrubs, again, to allow for visibility coming in there. You're allowed to do shrubs up to a certain height for, for view triangles. I try to even go below that if I can, just, because if you get a car that's a little shorter, like a, somebody that's dropped their car down, that's usually not taken into consideration, but I try to at least maximize those view corridors when I do design. Anything else, sir?
I think that's it. Thanks, James.
That completes our presentation, unless you have further questions.
Uh, I, we talked briefly about deliveries. Wonder if, if someone could answer what would typically be the type, style, size of the vehicles that make deliveries?
I think they're going to be semis, aren't they? Charles Bassinet, for the record, I would imagine that, for the most part, they're going to be semi tractor-trailers that are going to be deliveries, and that will provide for less deliveries, obviously, because the trucks are a little bit bigger. And what we've done, you can see, I've just been told it's one truck a week on the deliveries. And you can see in the back here, we've actually put in some colored pavers to separate this area here, which is the delivery area, from the sidewalk and, and the street out here, Furlong Street. But what's going to happen is the truck will come into Furlong, go in here, and then back in.
Back in.
Just back it down in. But again, that's only going to happen just once a week, so we can make sure that we time that properly, so that it doesn't impact the school across the street.
School drop-off or pickup?
Does that also apply to beverage companies like Pepsi, Coke, and that? Because they usually have, what, daily deliveries or every other couple of days? Or your snack companies, you know?
Well, we, we think it's just one truck only per week. I mean, if it's a Pepsi truck or something like that, first of all, it's not one of the semis. It's a much more manageable-sized truck.
Right, right.
And that could be different hours of the day during the week, I would imagine. Again, though, even if it's, even if there is some kind of a soda truck or something like that, it's going to be a once-a-week kind of delivery. The store just isn't that big.
My, my client may slap my wrist at this, but I don't think they do that kind of product in a Family Dollar store.
Not sure.
I don't think that's, that's what their, what their product mix is.
But, but, even, even in, even with respect to that, I mean, I, I have to say that, even assuming that they do that kind of product level, that the level of deliveries that we're talking about are so minuscule as to not have any negative impacts.
Okay. I'd like to just revisit one more issue here. With the entrances and the exits, you know, we have the traffic bar, the traffic line and that, would that be, would there be a possibility of, there's one, two, three, for three speed bumps? Now, and the reason I'm saying that, because if you're going to have traffic coming from racetrack...
Are you talking in this area right here?
There, there, and down here.
Here?
Yeah, those three.
What if we, what if we raised the level right here of this crosswalk? That would act as one speed bump.
Okay.
And then...
But is that a... But is that a parking space in between there?
That's a handicap.
Well, if we can't, it's a handicap right here.
Right.
If we can't raise this, then we can probably do one speed bump in this area here. And I would suggest to you that if we did one midway in here, it would be sufficient also. The problem, what I don't wanna do is get into a situation where you have multiple speed bumps in here, and it makes it inconvenient for anyone that's using the parking lot to get around in there. It's just that speed bumps can be, I mean, they're, they're meant to slow traffic, certainly, but they can be very inconvenient if you hit a bunch of them all in a short period of time. On the other hand, if you're talking about one in the center kind of right here, people coming through, it's gonna cause them to stop or slow down significantly in this area, which means that they're gonna have to come into here at a reasonable speed, and then they're gonna leave at a reasonable speed.
You know, my concern is coming around that curve, and then you have the people in the parking spaces that are, that are right up against.
You're talking right here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then the people that are backing out from those parking spaces that are facing Benita Beach Road there. I just, I just envision people backing out and getting hit by people coming around that, that tight curve.
Well, and that's a valid point, certainly. Couple of things, though, to keep in mind. One is that this site is set up consistent with the way that the, that the overall site plan is for this property. I mean, this is all, all part of a larger development, if you will. This is only one of the parcels. And the way that this was set up was to have this turn lane here with a right turn in, and then to have this access road, this front access road. So what, all we're doing is we're following a site plan, if you will, that was previously approved by both this board and the city council. Having said that, I, I do appreciate your concern. And what, I think what causes us to not have as much concern as you do at this point is the fact that the way this is set up is that it is a turn lane, people do have to slow down to come in here. What you're gonna find is, is that with these trees, the way that they're set up, and this is misleading right here, you have good view corridors in here, so you can, the people coming in certainly can see. And if somebody's parked right here, for instance, I mean, they've got that view corridor right here to see people coming in. And it's like any other parking lot for this kind of a use, a CVS or anything like that. You have to be careful when you're backing out of these parking spaces. I can tell you from personal experience, it can be a problem sometimes. But that's just the nature of what we have here, and there's not a lot more we can do other than to install a speed bump. We already have a stop sign here, we have a stop sign here that will stop people going eastbound. You know, we have this pedestrian crossing walk here. We can do, as I said, probably a, a speed bump in this area here. So, we're going to do what we can to slow the traffic down internally, and we understand the concerns there. But I think it's important to keep in mind that this is all part of a larger project that was previously approved to, to set exactly the way that we've got it today. And so, all we've done is try to accommodate that in the best way that we can and, and to keep safety in mind when we do it.
Two things, one, the client did slap my hand. They do have that kind of product, but they indicated that they only supply the store centrally, and it comes in on the one semi. So they don't have beverage trucks delivering or snack trucks or anything like that, it all comes in on the one semi. So, having said that, I was just talking to Mr. Dahmer, and nobody likes speed bumps. If we have to put them in, we'll put them in. What I would suggest is if you, if, and we're very cognizant of this, let us work with staff as part of the development order process to come up with traffic calming on this site. Because what I think, what we've already done, you can't really see it very well from this, but you can on the engineered plan, this is a compound curve when you come in. That, that alone, just the geometry of that curve will slow people down. I like the idea of kind of what we did back here, of putting in a, a pattern in the pavement of some sort, and you can groove the pavement that it'll sound noisy in your car when you drive over it without being a speed bump, and it'll force you to slow down. We can, we can design this entry with a grooved pavement if we need to and come around this corner that'll slow people down. And that may work just as well as a speed bump. Now, if we have to put a speed bump out here to keep people from coming through, you know, maybe we have to do that as well. But I think, I think on this entry, which, as I said, we're concerned about it, and we've been working with staff pretty carefully to try and make this work, there are some alternative traffic calming devices that we can consider. And if you, if you let us work with staff as part of the overall development process and put a fairly generalized condition in there on something like that, I, I think we're gonna make it so that everybody's gonna be satisfied and yet still implement this racetrack agreement that was already signed.
Two other, two other things to note on this drawing, where these stop, these are actually stop lines here and here. So there's actually a stop sign here and a stop sign down here. So going southbound, you will stop before you can leave the site. Going northbound, you will stop here before, so, and there's a stop sign here also. So that's going to act as a calming mechanism, both for the, for the northbound traffic and the eastbound traffic.
And the speed bump that, or the speed slowing device in the middle, the speed bump, will also help
Absolutely.
People to stop at the stop signs.
Absolutely, but you're not, I mean, this isn't that long a shot right in here, so you're certainly not gonna have people get, get up too much speed because they know they're gonna have to stop right here at this line anyway.
And you're going to raise the pedestrian walk?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna try that. If we can't do that, if it's ADA prohibited or something like that, we'll do something else in this area to, to act as a calming measure. But again, you've got a stop sign that's sitting right here.
Right, wouldn't, wouldn't you be feeding your purpose by putting a speed device in the middle rather than towards the, more towards the racetrack?
You could, but there's a stop sign.
This is where you would wanna keep the traffic from, just.
There's a stop sign right here also. It's, that doesn't do it for you?
Sometimes the best traffic calming device, quite frankly, are cars because if people know that they have to go through a parking lot, many people go slower because they don't want their car dinged by somebody backing out. But may I suggest the conditions? Are you ready to? I would add a new condition, 3D. I like the number, but that was not intentional, it's in the transportation section. At the time of development order, the site plan must show traffic calming devices to minimize speeding or cutting through the parking lot. The reason why I use traffic calming devices is if you try to put three speed bumps, there's a difference between a speed bump, a speed hump. Sometimes there's difference in, you know, the physical out there, and the transportation engineers go insane if you go for something specific. He didn't, I swear. And the other change would be to condition 10. Deliveries are limited to one delivery during the hours of any time between 8:30 but before 2:00 p.m. or between 5:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. And then the rest of the condition reads the same. And that's so that the school traffic, the delivery truck will not be creating a problem with the school traffic.
Pick, pickup or drop off?
This is the delivery truck, they test.
Right, no deliveries during pickup or drop off time for the schools.
Right.
Right.
She's being specific.
Right.
What's the time, Audrey, again?
The time limit that we put was any time between 8:30 in the morning but before 2:00 p.m. Okay, or between 5:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. Now, we could add additional in there. These hours may be changed by staff depending on the school hours.
I'm not sure I understand the condition. If she could read the whole one again for me, I'm sorry.
I think the intent was, the board was concerned that there's no deliveries when children are being dropped off in the morning or picked up in the afternoon.
Hey, do we know when those hours are at the charter school?
For the record, Jacqueline Gensen, I believe it, I don't know the exact time, so I possibly could get a phone call into our engineer, he kinda knows it very well. But the school right now, I believe, is K through 5, and they may expand. So if they do add a middle school or high school, the hours could change. So, maybe it is more appropriate to just stay, you know, during, like a window between school hours in case the hours.
School lets out at 3:45.
Well, it's the drop off and drop on, right.
If, if you, if you leave the staff with the opportunity to modify those hours based on the needs, then we can just, we can put some time in for today. We can confirm that after the meeting. And also, in the future, if it turns out that those times don't quite work the way that you wanted them to work, we can adjust them as long as you give staff that ability to adjust them. And if that's what you're doing, then we don't, we don't have a problem with that.
Okay, so the condition would now read, again, it's a one delivery per day. Deliveries are limited to one delivery, anytime between 8:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. or between 5:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m., period. A new sentence, these hours may be changed administratively by staff so that no deliveries occur during school pickup and drop off times. Yeah, and then the sentence that reads in, there's currently no change. The applicant will place signage to indicate the hours as well as to prohibit diesel trucks from idling at the location. So hopefully, it's not a diesel truck that's at the, doing deliveries.
It's a tractor-trailer, it will be.
Better make sure.
They won't be idling.
If it's tractor-trailer, it will be.
Well, and that's okay if it's diesel, but it's not idling, if they turn off the engine.
Right.
They go past for home, but then turn around.
But they come out on first.
Well, and, and like we said, we can make adjustments to that if it, you know, if the time is a little bit different than what we've got here, so it shouldn't be a problem.
What, what, what would you say is a typical customer turnaround time for a Family Dollar?
Great question. How about, how about we use 45 minutes? I honestly, honestly, I can't tell you for certain, but I would think it would be less than an hour.
I'm just curious, because that would affect, you know, affect the traffic.
Given the kind of, given the kind of store that it is, I would say less than an hour, probably. And it's not, I mean, the store itself isn't that large. It's not like you're going into a, a 50,000 square foot or 60,000 square foot Macy's or something like that. It's just not the same kind of shopping experience, if you will.
That guy's asking for a price check at the Family Dollar. That always gets a laugh, that's always, always a good one.
Okay, and although this doesn't really pertain to the application, if in the future gambling is approved, you know, on the site at the, at the track, how do, how do you think that would affect traffic?
The clientele?
Well, buy a lot of Marcus.
People would be getting their, taking their winnings, they'll open them straight over to Family General.
That's right.
I think we'll deal with that one when that becomes approved, because that'll be part of their development order.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
I don't know, that's a good answer.
Yeah, I really don't know, I mean, I don't, I can't give you an answer on that. Good question, though, but.
Jackie?
Good morning, for the record, Jacqueline Gensen with Community Development. I'm here, and also Pramaj Chahadri is here. Mike Kirby could not be with us today, he is out on training, so I will do my best to answer any buffering questions you might have. Again, request before use to rezone the property from C-1A to CPD to allow greater flexibility in site design, given the characteristics and challenges of the site. Staff did recommend approval with conditions which are set forth in your staff report. The subject property, again, Benita Beach Row, which is four lanes under construction for six, racetrack road, there's Furlong Street, and please, this is Education Way. The charter school does have both buildings in full operation. Just to let you know how the charter school works, we have worked very closely with the charter school in terms of pickup and drop off. The property is signed appropriately, but when the students get dropped off, the parents take them from this entrance, drop off, and then they exit. So it is really down to a science at the charter school. Staff has worked very closely with the principal and staff to make sure it is as seamless as possible. Future land use is general commercial, so the use is consistent, the FAR is consistent, the height is consistent. Zoning permitted uses, this use is allowed in the C-1A district, but again, because of unique site constraints, the applicant did proceed with a commercial plan development to allow flexibility in the development standards and as well as clustering buffers and whatnot to accommodate the site. The existing use is vacant commercial. And just to give you some history on the Greyhound Square Racetrack Development Property, and you guys kinda got this history when the Racetrack Fuel CPD went through, but originally, this property had a residential future land use category, and it did go through a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment for general commercial. It also had a companion development agreement, it did not go through a rezoning process. So a lot of stipulations were set forth in the development agreement in terms of square footage of certain uses, traffic impact conversions, architecture. So several items in that development agreement which do still apply to this property, an application request. The entire development was approved through a Lee County Development Order, and which had the initial architectural review, but since the city took over its own permitting, the entity has come in, made some modifications to accommodate the charter school and as well for the Racetrack Fuel CPD and the Affordable Tire Store. So there has been several changes within the entire center itself. Again, this is the master concept plan, which the applicant did go over. Racetrack Fuel is in the process of working out, hopefully with the county. If they don't make it in the same window as the county for the widening, they will pursue the turn lane on their own. But the turn lane was approved as part of the Racetrack Fuel CPD amendment for access off of Benita Beach Road, and then an access easement going through the Family Dollar subject property into Racetrack Fuel. Like the applicant said, we did coordinate strongly with the applicant and Lee County DOT as well as our engineer for just internal circulation of the site. Staff did have the same concerns that you guys did. That's why we did work very closely and put in stop bars, other traffic calming measures, which typically you wouldn't do at a master concept plan level. But again, given the unique characteristics of the property and staff concerns, we did go ahead and identify those on the master concept plan. And they did talk about the rear loading zone. Part of the reason why we do have the architectural pavement and the landscape buffers to screen the loading zone, that's very important to staff, and as well, Chapter 3 does require screening for those uses. Yeah, this is just page 2 of the master concept plan, which delineates their open space there, providing just a little bit over the required, delineates the types of buffers and the deviations and other development standards. I'll quickly go over the deviations, but the applicant did cover them rather thoroughly. Staff is in agreement with all their justifications, and we do agree that enhances the plan development and does protect health, safety, and welfare. Staff did approve the deviation for the five-foot side setback, subject to condition 5, which is for the enhanced landscape buffering. But given the unique design of even Racetrack Fuel, you'll see there is some open space here, and they did also have some extensive buffering as well to shield the building and deliveries from the charter school, which is catty corner up to the southeast. So, when you look at the five-foot setback deviation and the way it adjoins the Racetrack Fuel CPD, staff felt that the deviation was appropriate. And given that we do have a hedge and some enhanced landscaping, staff was able to recommend approval, subject to condition 5. And again, this is just a grayscale rendering of the landscaping that the applicant has proposed, which is part of the staff report and will be attached in the zoning ordinance. Deviation 2 is, again, the loading zone. Chapter 3 in our commercial standards does require screening. Again, because of the unique constraints of the site with the access road and the right-of-way take for the D cell lane, staff did work with the applicant to still provide some type of screening for the loading zone. So you will see the landscape plantings along the rear where the loading door is, as well as their AC and mechanical equipment. So that will be screened with landscaping, again, as well as the decorative pavement to show a boundary between the sidewalk. But it will also allow for the truck to go over and still make that back and turn to unload their product. So staff did work very closely with the applicant to come up with this design. Deviation 3, again, is the parking, and based on the applicant's data analysis from other sites, staff was comfortable with this. staff was comfortable with this reduction in parking. We definitely are fans of, not seize the parking. So, and especially along Benita Beach Road. You really don't want to see a lot of cars and parking spaces along Benita Beach Road. So with the data analysis applied to staff, we felt that the deviation was appropriate. Deviation 4 is the Type D buffer along Benita Beach Road. Again, because of the D cell lane, the right-of-way take, we did still want to require a Type D buffer, or the same number of plantings, Type D buffer. And we just know that the width is going to meander as the right-of-way is taken for the D cell lane. So this is the same condition that we placed in the Racetrack CPD. So we still will have the intent of that nice Type D buffer along Benita Beach Road. Comprehensive plan consistency, the height in the zoning, it's 35 feet. They can go up to 75 feet. So the height's consistent. The use is appropriate in the general commercial category. They're under the 1.2 FAR. The use is compatible with the Racetrack Fuel site to the west and the Affordable Tire to the east. The use is consistent with the Benita Beach Road corridor, the architectural style as well. And it's also consistent with the development agreement for the Bermuda-style architecture. And the public facilities and services will be in place to service the site. For compatibility, we did off condition for enhanced buffers, no outdoor display of merchandise. And the master concept plan is very specific to the Family Dollar store, but should Family Dollar cease and another entity comes in, depending what that use is, we did provide some extra conditions to protect certain screening requirements and whatnot. So you'll see those in Condition 8 and 9 in the case a different end user comes in to use the site. We did limit hours for delivery, which you guys did make some modifications, which staff is in full agreement with. And they will also have to comply with the noise ordinance. This, again, just goes over the surrounding area and compatibility. This is Affordable Tire, which is actively under construction. Racetrack Fuel, their development order for all intents and purposes is ready to go. Hopefully, they will start construction rather soon. This is the charter school. And the charter school is contemplating maybe a future expansion, so for gymnasiums. But we'll see if that happens. This is Pine Haven Office Park with some office uses. This is residential in nature. Future Home of Lowe's, hopefully, and Commodore Storage. So based on the surrounding properties, it is commercial nature, so the use is compatible. This is the architectural rendering in black and white. San Vincent, the city architect, has been in direct contact with the applicant's architect to make sure that they are still meeting the intent of the Racetrack Development Agreement. So you will see the Bermuda shutters here. There is a metal roof, an awning. So there are elements of the Bermuda Key West architecture style. So they'll continue to work together through the development order process to make sure they are consistent with that agreement and Chapter 3. And that's just a site elevation. So in conclusion, staff finds that the applicant has demonstrated entitlement to a commercial plan development. It's in compliance with the Benita Plan and the Land Development Code as conditioned. And it meets all the requirements for commercial plan development. It will not adversely affect the neighborhood or surrounding uses. Staff do recommend approval. Do you have any questions for staff?
Anybody have any additional questions? Thank you very much. Does any board member have any additional questions at this time? At this time, I'd like to open the public portion of this application. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against the applicant? Since no one would like to speak, I'd like to close the public portion. I believe what we have right now is the staff recommendation with all the conditions. And we've modified two of the conditions. One for the delivery times and one for traffic calming. Any other questions? If there's no additional questions, is there a board member who would like to offer a motion to approve or deny the application with the conditions and the two modified conditions?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept with conditions and modified conditions.
Seconded by Mr. Pestori. Roll call?
Susan Healy?
Yes.
Frank Lyles?
Yes.
Chairman Nospom?
Yes.
Robert Inserpi?
Yes.
Roger Brunswick?
Yes.
Pete Pestori?
Yes.
Thank you.
May I ask just one question?
No.
I'm not sure whether...
He said no, Charlie.
Yeah, I know, I know. I just wanted to be sure that the PowerPoint got entered into evidence and was accepted.
Yes, it was. PowerPoints and, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time this morning. Nice presentation. Thank you. Do they sell ties like that at the Dollar?
I've had that for a few years. I, you know, I don't know if they do or not, but DePew, LePew, you know, it's a natural. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Did all board...
Nice job, gentlemen.
Did all board members get a copy of the minutes from our January 17, 2012 meeting? Are there any comments, questions, corrections, additions? No. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Oh, yes. Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
No, don't, don't.
Mr. Inserpi has the floor.
Case we just had prior to this one. The gentleman brought up the case about it, that the city gave them two options to either put the fence or put the buffer on, okay? Now, we didn't know anything about that. Now, we went through this about a year ago. We said that everything, all these changes would be brought up to us before the case comes in front of us. So we got blindsided with this. I didn't know anything about this, and nobody on the board knew anything about it. That the city gave these people an option, one or two options to put a buffer up.
There really wasn't much historical knowledge within our office on that, mainly because that project was approved when Lee County was still working as your community development department. And so I had heard rumors, most time unless there's something I can substantiate or at least have a good source, I don't like to announce it or present it because I can't verify that it's true. So I wasn't sure exactly what went on in those negotiations. I still don't know if there was anything that was specifically said between the county and that applicant that really gave them... I don't know. I don't know what the choices were. I don't know how the discussion was played out.
But you know, that makes the board look like, well, you guys aren't really totally prepared because you don't have all the facts in front of you.
It could have been too. Maybe it was a legal non-conforming use, and then they just switched by getting a new use permit. And because of the outdoor storage of the bins, you had to screen it? Because you do have to screen outdoor storage if it faces a right-of-way, and that's probably what that was.
And quite frankly, when Old 41 was not widened and it did not look as attractive, the staff, you know, might have been more lax at, you know...
Any of that could have happened. A lot of the people that were involved, even on the county side, are no longer there. So the historical information is hit and miss now at best.
We're off the TV, right?
No, I think we're still on.
I'll refrain from making a comment. Okay.
And it might be that the information that the applicant provided may have been true or not. Who even knows what their basis of knowledge was?
Correct. I have no reason to suspect what he's saying is not true, but I have no basis to confirm that it is true.
Okay, I will say it on the record, anyway. One of the other applicants was enjoying the fact that the applicant during their... Don't worry about it going on the record for that part. When the applicant worked for Lee County, he had one viewpoint and then took a totally different viewpoint once working in the private sector. So, interesting. He enjoyed, the other applicant enjoyed watching him be grilled.
He saw the light.
Yeah. Yeah, but they enjoyed watching him have to squirm.
Squirm, right. Re-adjourn? Oh, no.